First item of business would be the roll call. Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick. Commissioner Hambrick. Commissioner Sana Gregory.
I'm here.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick. She's logged on. I don't know if she's having difficulty with the volume or not, but we will go on to the next item, and that is the preliminary items for the next board meeting. Are there any items that the board members have reviewed that they would like to discuss?
Not so much discussed, Mr. Chairman, but I believe on the one item, it's item 18, it's listed as single-family home. The proper term is actual single-family attached homes. There's a difference between attached and detached.
Okay.
And that is the, even though I know it's government and zoning, but that's the, we need to denote that.
Okay, duly noted. Any others?
Chairman, this is Hambrick. I'm here to ask a few questions.
Okay, please let the minutes reflect. Commissioner Hambrick is online. All right, the first two items of the work session has been asked to be withdrawn. So items one and two will be withdrawn, and we will start the discussion this evening with number three, the proposed zoning amendment for alternative housing types. Director Jekki.
Thank you, Chairman Vice Chair and Commissioner. Good evening. I hope everybody will see that. My presentation today has to do with what I have dubbed the alternate housing types. There are three groups of housing that we deal with. Usually they end up generating complaints, as you all know already. Some of them don't come through the process to get permitted. It's hard to handle those. But what we want to do is have a better handle on regulating the ones that come through. Usually when they don't come through, we issue them citations, to the extent that that helps. It does, but we want to make sure that the code reflects what we're trying to do. So, and whenever you're regulating housing types, it generates, it makes you wonder and be very careful about Fair Housing Act, so that you do not violate the Fair Housing Act. So we have worked for some weeks and got and saw some other areas where they defined family in the code as three unrelated people. That means if folks are related, there can be as many as of them in the house, but it will be three unrelated people. What is interesting about these three housing types, the boarding homes, the group homes, and the personal care, they are actually businesses that are in the residential areas. So we are tread, we are treading lightly in terms of not to violate the Fair Housing Act, but at the same time, regulate, bring some comfort to our residents. So if you look at the chart, we kind of grouped them into three areas, the boarding group. Two things we want to change, we think we can do effectively, is redefine the size of family to, from four to three. Our code currently says four. We want to go to three. Usually the idea of three is that it stop being lucrative for them to only get three people in their house and do their business. Four sounds like it's, they make some money, because it is a business. So by doing that, we hope to slow down the applications or the need for scumming. So when you have more than three, you must come through the BOC process. And that process allows you to get a CUP, which costs some money. So if I'm in a home and I can rent my house out, I call the state, being that I'm going to spend some money off from my attorney from doing that, and it requires more scrutiny. Another thing that, the chart that you're looking at is to give you the top row in blue, is to give you an idea of the things we look at in doing this, number of participants, the zoning, the ones we can approve in-house without going to BOC. If it's three, it used to be four, now we're making it three. We talk about, that would be the conditional use permits, the reviews that we do, building and fire, floor plans. When you have more than three now, you will have to do a floor plan, business license, state licenses. There is something peculiar about the way the state does this. If you look at boarding homes, it doesn't require a state license, but group home and personal care homes do. So we don't really have a whole leverage in saying you must come from the state before you get to us. So, but nevertheless, another area we wanted to put some guardrails and monitoring on is on distance. We're now saying, if you look on the, on the area that talked about distance requirement, well now, or if you look on the old, they are all NAs. But now we're saying that if you hit the threshold of four, you must be a mile from the nearest group home, personal care home, or boarding home. It's a way to help us kind of manage what is happening. So we've put that distance requirement in the three of them. If you look at the old, we didn't have it before. We think with distance and the new definition of family, we should hopefully put our arms around how it's coming. Currently, the three types of alternate housing, we have in excess of eighty, ninety in the county already. And I know there's a whole lot more, the ones that were not permitted. We're planning to figure out a way to police them. We're planning to code them in our system differently starting January, so that we can track them a little bit better. When they come, we give them starting coding in our system so that we can find them. So that is really what we're trying to do here. On the bottom where you see the red, we've had discussions with legal in our monthly meetings, talked about code sections where we need to go and codify certain things to make sure that what we are proposing had some enforcement power, if you will. So we go into our main places in the business license code and mostly in the zoning code. Just that when we get a pushback, we can rely on the power of our code to say it is codified. This is how we want to do it. So another area we couldn't touch because of the Fair Housing Act is on the fence area. We wanted to require fencing. Legal didn't think it was a good idea, because it would trigger something else in other housing types. So we kind of left that alone. And so, and that is really my presentation, and I will plead with the board. If it's the pleasure of the board to move this forward, we plan to bring this in the January zoning, which will be the January nineteenth or so zoning, the zoning area in January, to bring this forward, so that we can go take our time to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's crossed with legal, then bring it forward.
Okay, so are there any questions from any board members in reference to this?
Yes, Hambrick, I do.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Okay, maybe I missed it, but Steve Jekki, did you say group homes have to be licensed?
Yes, group homes have to, group homes have to be licensed by the state.
Okay, so they're licensed by the state.
Yeah, yeah, then that's our measure of knowing they have gone through the state. Then we start processing our part.
So they don't have to do anything with the county as long as they're licensed through the state?
No, they do, but that's one of our requirements. That means if someone submits an application, it doesn't have that approval from the state, we turn them back to go back to the state.
Okay, and if they do have the approval through the state, but it isn't an area or closer to other residences or whatever, is that, is there anything that the county can do? Because we had some problems a couple of years ago.
Yes.
With increasing the number of people that were in their homes and some other things.
Yes, there's something we can do now if this moves ahead and gets approved. Now, although they get a permission from the state, they have to either be three or less to be handled administratively by the zoning administrator. But if they have four clients, they must apply for CUP to come through the BOC process. That's what we can do. And two, if there are more than four or more, they must have the one-mile radius, which is the review process that we go through. So there are things we can do to say, although the state says you can, but our zoning code also says you must meet those requirements before you come through.
Okay, now if we suspect that someone has a house and they are renting rooms, not just the property to one family or one person or whatever, but they are actually renting rooms, do we have anything on the books for that?
We do have something for Airbnb.
Oh, that's gonna be, that's gonna be my next question.
Yeah, we do have something for Airbnb. We rely on neighbors to report those things, because we can catch them until neighbors report. But we don't have anything on the books for rental. So we don't have anything for the ability for individuals to rent out their homes to folks to, so we don't have anything to say you can't.
And there's no, I mean, would you even realistically, no? If I have a room and somebody comes to my house and they're paying me rent, they're not required to report the money that they're getting. So there's a, it's kind of hard to police, is all I'm saying.
Yes.
Yeah, well, what I was talking about, Chairman, is that, and I suspect that there is a house in my district now that's doing it, one that I suspect is doing it. I'm sure some others are doing it. They have a house, they got three or four bedrooms, and they are renting each, each room to different individuals.
Then we might look to see if it's a boarding, a boarding, a boarding home. If, if they are boarding home, a group home, I mean, usually that even says it might be a boarding home. But if it's not a boarding home.
What kind of home you calling?
Boarding.
What is a boarding?
A boarding, okay.
So if it's not that, then that becomes an issue.
Okay. I have a question. One other one, back to Airbnb.
Hold on a second.
About Airbnb, because you know, we've had that problem with one specifically up here, and I think the way we, I believe we stopped it. I don't hear anything else from the resident anymore. But the fact that they did not come through the permit office first, is there anything else on the books?
No, if they don't come first, that means they cannot be permitted. That part is in the code. If you stop one and we catch it and they didn't come, it's automatic, I'm just in denial. So that's how that works.
Commissioner Warner, I think you have something.
I do, and I want to piggyback on what Commissioner Hambrick just said. That is an issue in many of our districts, but I believe the real issue in concert is not only identifying them, but being able to prove that they are a boarding home. That's a very fine line. So I think many of us already know in some cases, like it was mentioned that folks are renting rooms out. I've even mentioned to you all several times that many of these townhomes turn into basically apartments. And those apartments are not only being rented out to single families, which of course, we're not able, as Chairman mentioned earlier, to impede upon that, because remember, the right to hold property and to do with that property as you wish on a residential level is a constitutional right. However, there are homes where they're renting out the various rooms, which in essence becomes similar to an Airbnb or a group home. The challenge we're having is having the teeth to be able to go in and regulate those, because we know which ones they are, the neighbors know which ones they are. But I believe that's a heavier lift, and it may be something we need to work on in concert with possibly other jurisdictions.
Any other questions?
I do want to say that I wish there was something we really could do about these townhomes again that turn into apartments, because there's a vast difference between somebody purchasing these homes and then renting them out. I have nothing against renters, because again, everybody needs a place to stay, and we can't govern whether a person owns it or does not own it. And at the end of the day, many of us don't own our homes. The mortgage company owns it. But I will say, when you are purchasing a home, you're having to come up with money now. That's a totally different clientele when somebody's choosing to live in an area. Also, we know that when you're renting out all of those homes, and when I say renting them out, I mean investment companies. So they're building these townhomes, and then an investment company is coming in and buying them all up, or even the builder or developer is buying them up and renting them back out, and they're owning the rights to all of those homes. And then of course, they run the HOA. That's very problematic. So where this presentation was very good, and I see what we're looking to make some changes, I think that needs to be one of our number one pushes, because otherwise, you can always end up with people circumventing the process and then basically coming in and, you know, asking for attached or detached, attached residential, when it's actually an apartment complex, so.
Any other questions or statements?
Now, I just want your communication director to take that into account and bring us back some solutions.
Communications director?
Not communication, community development. You know, like my mom said, you know what I'm talking about. Communications director. I'm not an advocate of these.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you for that presentation. Go ahead to the next. Did you have another one, or did you incorporate everything?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's hear about Silver Sneakers.
Hello, everybody. How are you doing tonight?
We're doing well. How are you?
Hello. Hi, Stephen. Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Great.
Good. So tonight, I'm super excited to talk to you guys about something that we have been working on in our department for a while. And as you know, we're always looking for opportunities to provide benefits to our seniors in ways that we can enhance their life. So this is a program that's very popular, and I consider ourselves to kind of be a cutting-edge department always in the know about what's going on. But this is one of those programs that's been around for a while, and our seniors have constantly been asking about it. But we did not move forward into doing the research about the program and all of that. So here we are, and we've done the research and met with Mr. Reed about the agreement. And just super excited, and so Stephen Unraff from Silver, from Activity Health is going to give you guys some information about our Silver Sneakers program. And then there's also another program that they have on Activity Health that's called Prime. And it's also a membership package that will serve the community at large. So for the Flint River community, those people who are non-seniors will also be able to partake into this program. So he's going to give you some information. I do have some handouts that he sent, and I will make sure that you guys get them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, good evening, everybody. How are you doing?
Good, just fine. How are you?
Very good. Thanks for inviting me today. I think Tori gives us some information out to you guys there. I'm here to kind of answer a lot of questions and give you a brief synopsis of Silver Sneakers and Prime. Kate, feel free to interrupt me at any point, and then tell me if your question's along the way. So Silver Sneakers is a major healthcare program designed for older adults. Specifically people aged sixty-five and older on a Medicaid eligible program. We've been around since about 2004, I believe, maybe longer than that. So we have a lot, and I have some numbers I'll share with you a little bit. We have a lot of eligibles around your three senior centers and as well as your upcoming community center. In fact, I think I'll give you these numbers now. Around the Charlie Griswold Senior Center, there's about 10,000, 400-plus Silver Sneaker members that are eligible within five miles. Later on, we took a lot of Prime product, and there's about 383 members eligible within five miles at that location for Prime. For the Flint River Community Center, that's had about 13,684 members eligible within five miles. And for Prime, 312 members within five miles. For the Frank Bailey Senior Center, there's about 14,833 eligible members within five miles. And then for Prime, there are 375 members eligible within five miles. And then last, for the Northeast Senior Center, there's about 9,309 members eligible for Silver Sneakers. And for Prime, 21. So Silver Sneakers, these members, they're eligible through their health insurance. They're able to go to, mainly basically once, is they'll be able to go to your senior centers, exercise workout in the fitness center, workout in your yoga classes. Right now, I believe your membership rates for your residents are about $12 a year for members to go out to work out at your senior centers. We will be reimbursing you basically per visit. It'll be about $2.50 per visit for a cap of $20 a month. So that's a lot more money you'll get that way versus, you know, a per year for your residents. Again, you'll see non-residents are going to pay the same rate. There's still be more than what you currently get, I guess, for the non-resident fees, but most will be on your residence at this point. For Prime, which appears again later on, the reimbursement rate, I believe, is about $3.50 per visit to a particular cap, which I think we'll have to talk about that later on. Silver Sneakers, again, if you, if you're interested to find out which insurances are eligible, you go onto our website, www.silverseers.com. And you can go for eligible health plans, type in the state of Georgia, and you see all the different health plans we partner with. There's some national plans, like Atna, Havana, some clinics that are on there. We have this tool called our Red Portal that we'll be working with. We call a program advisor each location, probably Tori and Melissa there. They have, this Red Portal is basically one-stop shopping. They can check the members' eligibility there, they can check various reports, members that are coming in and not coming in, and let them know if members are eligible, or they have received a statement, their statement dropped off. There's lots of marketing tools on there, a lot of one-stop shopping, but they, the program really needs to organize. So they go on there, they check members' eligibility, they involve the location, place information. Then they give the core facilities, send them up on a locationally equipped, and hopefully these members, they continue to work out at your facility. You get paid each time they walk in through your doors. Prime will work the same way. We look at the various reports. Prime is typically people aged eighteen and sixty-four. They're eligible through their insurance, or if they're through their employer group. So they're kind of, on your Red Portal, you have a breakdown of reports of, here's your Silver Sneaker members, here's your Prime members, it's easy to distinguish the difference. We most likely will either give you a tablet or use your own software. And I believe Tori mentioned you guys have your own software. You'll be able to gather the specific members, visit your location, and then you submit us. These are those reports you do to about the fifth of each month for the previous month. So for example, if we were to get you onboarded January 1st, you would submit to us by February 5th all your visits to all your locations that are in network in the meanwhile for January. We would then pay you at least your back accounts the last visit day of February for January. We're always a month behind. Today, we're looking at two or three locations currently right now, and I think we're all looking at all three senior centers. And then adding the community center down the road. If you guys approve it, and we'll add that one, it's ready to go. Oh, sorry, what is interruption? So basically, we pay every time they walk in your door to work out, whether it be on your equipment or in your, or in your classes, if you learn classes. At some point down the road, another option for you guys is to add our senior classes to your location. We have, just like the YMC has branded classes for, you know, PINE, Water, Kentucky, Sunbass, and whatever, our classes are known throughout the country as well, whether it be our classic format, our splash formats, our boom format. Your instructors can then give our online classes with the trainees on the Honors for Resource Center, so they can teach these formats. We usually provide the equipment for most of those classes. It could be up to $15 a equipment for each of those, each location that offers those specific classes. So the members that can go and participate, again, in our classic format, or stability format, or energy format, or amber blue format, just about ten of the classes that they can pick from. Each location will be required to run about two classes a week. It could be any, it could be the same format twice or combination format. That's what we're going to look at much further down the road, but that's an option down the road to add those, those classes. Again, we would, we basically pay up to the walk-in door to work out. The classes are just name recognition and helps in retention purposes, things like that. That's a price basis overall of this program. Melissa, Tori, did I miss anything? Any questions? Please feel free to fly your legs short a couple things.
No, you pretty much covered everything.
Okay, so are there any questions for Stephen or for Tori in reference to this program?
I thought, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Warner, go ahead. Commissioner Warner, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I heard correctly. So we know the number of eligible members, and it would give us a reimbursement of $20 per month, what, $2 per day of participating, which could equal up to how much again? You said twenty a month?
So it's two fifty per visit, and if they come two times, it's only $5. But if they come up to, it's eight times, eight or more times a month, it caps out at $20.
I have one question on that too. Does virtual participation count considering COVID at this time? Or is it physical?
Great question, great question. And the problem, not the problem with that, but let me specify first. The situation with that is the way our health plan partners contracts work is it's supposed to be in-person. Now, you know, in-person, we, when COVID first hit in March, so kind of give you a lot of extra work information that you need, but we kind of need background. Back in March, when COVID first hit, we got a lot of our locations closed. We were thinking, trying to be outside the box. We get paid when you get paid, you go help them, but we, when we pay you guys. So we, for the first couple of months, April, May, we decided to pick up a lot to pay our partners if they were able to do live, virtual visits, they were able to have the traffic. We reimburse them out of our pocket at the time, we were trying to figure out what's going on. In the meanwhile, we worked with our health plan partners to see if they would agree to pay for virtual visits. That has been ongoing continuously since March. And just this, you know, we try not to advertise this, because the competitors try to copy a lot of our information, but just for December, we decided, not decided, we have enough locations, our health plan partners that agreed to reimburse, not that we, not that we make any money out of it, but enough to be break even. Our health plan partners have agreed to reimburse for virtual visits. If number one is live, and which two is trackable, and it's month to month. So right now, it's basically December through January, they're going to reimburse virtual visits to live the same way, but that could change, because it's not the tracks we have to give up to helping them, but they have, they have agreed to do so. That's a lot of information. I apologize, but it's a good background of how it works.
No, not a lot. It's good information. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hambrick, you have some?
Yes. In order for the county to be reimbursed, do the people that come to you have to be members of our senior centers?
Great question. So as soon as a member of ours walks in your door, they're basically considered enrolled in your location. So as soon as they enroll, you, you put them into your system. So basically, let's say John Doe walks into the Griswold Senior Center. They go to your front desk, staff, or your membership director, coordinator, you guys set up. And they say, I think they'll be still with sneakers. You go on under the Red Portal, you confirm their eligibility. They even have a card already, or they print it off with a six-digit ID number on there. You make sure this fellow is enrolled, then you enroll that into your system. Once you enroll in the system, then at the end of the month, by the fifth of the final month, you're going to pull. following month, you're going to pull all those members that have enrolled and submit them to us. I think, um, Tori was working on this, she's kind of, um, we basically buy the O from your system, um, and it'll be in a C X V format or an Excel format. Be it the first name, or last name, the sixteen-digit ID number, we assign that member, and then the date of the visit and the time of the visit. You're able to pull those five things into an Excel format, for example, you upload that into our Red Portal, and our utilization department process will, that's what we pay you to get it from.
And Commissioner?
Uh, well, some, somewhat, now I'm trying to think of, and, and I guess to get into my second question is, the advantage of, uh, of, of, of our seniors being a part of this, um, Silver Sneakers slash senior service. What's the advantage?
Can I chime in about the membership part first? So Commissioner Amber, when they come into our center, we'll treat them just like, we won't just, because they have Silver Sneakers, allow them to become a member of our senior center. We'll take them through the normal process, as if they just wanted to become a member of the senior center. And if they have Sil- Silver Sneakers, then that just will be a benefit to them and a perk to us.
So, so to piggyback on that, all these members are already eligible through their insurance, um, they're able to go to any of our fifteen thousand plus locations across the country, they travel with them as well. So, you have, I, I, you know, our network, they're now also able to go to your location, so it gives them more options, number one. Number two, it gives you some extra payment. Number three, so let's say they're in, in Georgia and they want to go to Florida on the vacation. They can log on their own website, find, come to zip code they're traveling to, they can go to the Gold's Gym, you know, on the vacation, they go to the YMCAs, they go to all those locations. They can actually search through amenities, um, they can find a location that offers our, 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 um, yoga class. And if, if this location does offer yoga, maybe this location doesn't, it's only five miles away, or this location has a pool and this location doesn't. So they can go, and make, go to the locations of what are not limited to this one.
That's what I'm wondering, uh, and I think you said, Tori, that, uh, some of the seniors were inquiring about it?
Yes.
Is, is there an advantage? Now, because what I'm seeing is more of a, of us losing members.
Um, no, this does not cause us to lose members. As a matter of fact, it enhances, it enhances our program's service delivery because now we'll be able to, so you know, in our department, we have a tiered service delivery as it relates to our classes that we offer. We have free classes and those classes, they're, they're free. Um, they're, they're, they're not a, the, the instructor of the, of the classes, they have gone through some certification process, but they're not our tier-three type, um, instructor. So then we do have tier-two type instructors, those are our staff that we, um, we send to, to get certified and they also teach classes. Then we also have our, um, contracted instructors. So now our contracted instructors, our staff, and those staff that teach those free classes will now be able to go and get certified and take classes through, um, Silver Sneakers. So that is going to a- actually enhance what we do. They also reimburse us and they also pay for supplies and materials to be able to teach those classes as well. So we want to kind of take it slowly and go with the membership plan first, um, go off into the Prime section of it, and then get into the training for our instructors and to be able to teach some of the Silver Sneakers, um, type classes and programs inside our facilities. Now, our members were asking about this program because, now, now, when you, when you talk in terms of what is the perk for our twelve-dollar members, actually, there's no benefit to them because they're, they're already paying us twelve dollars a year. So there's no true benefit to them. However, they are always asking because they visit other centers and they're like, oh, well, this center has Silver Sneakers, what is it? What is that program and what can it provide for me? So the only benefit that they will get from us, our twelve-dollar members, is taking those classes where the instructors have gone through the training for Silver Sneakers. But...
One, one last, one last thing. Uh, do the members, do our members have to go to the Silver Sneakers, um, facilities, or they still come to?
No, ma'am, so Commissioner Amber, our snee- our members are already going to Silver Sneaker gyms. They go to every gym that is Silver Sneaker certified, they go to LA Fitness, they go to Anytime Fitness, all of these gyms already have Silver Sneakers. So to be honest, we're a little bit behind and that's why I was talking about how this is really a perk to us, it's not going to take away anything from our members. Our members will continue to come to the center and participate in programs, it's just that the service delivery is going to be enhanced because now our instructors are going to get this top-tier training from Silver Sneakers. And, um, now, this is a section that I know we, we're more concerned about our residents as we should. It is going to be more of a perk to a non-resident because now, whereas they paid us to, they stopped coming to our centers because of the one hundred and eighty-dollar a year fee, now they'll start coming to our center and then they'll get reimbursed, they're not having to come out of their pocket. So from that perspective, it will be something that is an enhancement to a non-resident as it relates to the membership portion.
May I say that it could be a benefit to us, um, too, Tori, with the new Northeast Center sitting right on the edge of Clayton, Henry, and DeKalb? And one of the things that the DeKalb and Henry residents have already been talking about is, you know, I've got Silver Sneakers. And so they're excited. So it, it can be a benefit to us with a center like that, you know, sitting in the middle of them.
And tho- and those, Commissioner Gregory, are the members that have been, I have ten members that, if this passes, I have to call immediately because they sit in your district and they have been calling me, asking me, when are we going to get Silver Sneakers? And I've kind of been putting it off for a while because we had other things that were a little bit more pressing. So you are exactly right, um, there are a lot of DeKalb County residents that sit on the border of Clayton that definitely could benefit from this as well.
Yeah, Steven, you had something you were going to say?
Yeah, or to clarify something, I, I hope it doesn't mess things up, but, so, what happens to that program is, um, we basically, they're done with the location experience and they walk in the door. The, the, what happens is members getting basic fitness membership at no cost to debt. So if I were to walk into a YMCAs, or JCC, or Gold's Gym, or Mom and Pops Fitness Center, I'm no longer paying a membership, okay? I'm not paying a basic membership. So there's a, there's a tiered membership, let's just say it's thirty dollars a month for the basic membership, or it's forty-five dollars a month for, for the pool and the membership, or for the basic membership. I, I get the basic membership at no cost, the pool is more, costs extra, the classes, if they're more, costs extra. So your locations are providing a basic membership, which, which I would interpret them to be, your, for your residents, your twelve dollars a year membership. That, that's basically what you're waiving, but in return, you're getting more money per visit. You're going to get, you know, instead of twelve dollars a year, you're going to get possibly twenty dollars a month.
And then also, Commissioner, um, Franklin Warner, this will also be a perk and a benefit to those, um, people who live in the Flint area that are not seniors. So that Prime portion that he spoke about is something that we will eventually incorporate as well.
Okay, wonderful. I'm just glad to hear that we're finally catching up to what's already been happening. And I love our folks in Henry and in DeKalb, but I remember dearly my mom being so sad when she still had to pay her membership even though she lived here in Clayton and had not been able to come. And I think it's so important for our seniors to be able to go places where they have friends, you know, I think, um, Commissioner Gregory alluded to it earlier, that's folks being on the line. We have to remember we're in a region. So a lot of times, people may live in other counties, but they go to church in our county, or they shop in our county, and they want to be able to spend time with those folks. So what I see in this program is going to allow us to be able to expand our base and allow more folks to come in, and I'm just stuck on the fact we'll get more back than what, um, what folks are already putting in, so that's wonderful.
Yeah, well, when you have the best facilities in the state, it only makes sense to make sure we, uh, enhance and grow what we have. So I appreciate you bringing this to us. Are there any other questions?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, since you touched on it, you know, it was stated when we got accredited that, um, the folks were so impressed with us that people were looking forward to getting older, they were like, look, it's something different over there, it's not a regular senior center. So I got to give kudos to Tori and Stroud and her staff, so just to piggyback on what you said, Mr. Chairman. I was trying to say it nice, you know, some other counties, they grill senior centers.
Yeah, and we, and we appreciate the money coming across county line, too, so, hey, very appreciative. All right, any other questions for Ms. Tori? Did you have?
No, no.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate the presentation.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Steven, you have something else?
This number says, well, after an email.
I didn't hear you, Steven.
So, all you value is enough as five months, it's well afterwards.
Okay, all right, thank you, Steven.
And I do have some, uh, handouts that I'll place commissioners in your mailbox, so that has a lot of additional information. Are there, thank you for your presentation. Are there any other? Are there any other business or discussion or announcements by any commissioners?
Yes, sir. You asked earlier about what was on the agenda, but I have two items that are not. Um, and I want to make sure that I do this in a prompt of manner, but, um, a couple weeks ago, it was brought to my attention about a very serious matter that would affect us here in this county. And I gave it some time, hoping that we would receive some information about it, but I did not see it on the agenda. And it is in regards to the fact that, um, GBI would no longer be providing us with services for what normally a coroner would do. And so I was just looking and being reminded of the statute that we have of not only, um, the majority rule of the board being what, um, you know, whoever's in that seat follows, but it's very imperative for us to be able to make informed decisions in a timely manner, um, for us to be informed and hear about it. I think, I will just say this, as a commissioner, uh, it's important for me to bring this up tonight because, um, we don't want to hear things, uh, from other districts when we're not aware as a board of commissioners because we're the ones ultimately, whether the vote is yay, nay, or indifferent, that are going to have to make those, um, votes and those decisions. And, um, this is something of serious nature, um, especially now during COVID nineteen. And I understand that these services were originally, um, due to stop on December thirty-first, but thank God we have until January. So I'm just hoping that we'll be able to all be reminded of our statutes and so that we would have a little bit more advanced communication, especially on items of this importance.
Commissioner Warner, there's been numerous communications going out, but this is an ongoing discussion and matter of fact, there's even a, another meeting tomorrow. And yes, it is very serious, but through the police department and other impacted, uh, departments throughout the, the county, uh, we're on top of it. So as that information becomes available, we'll make sure that everybody gets the same information we're getting. So thank you for your, for bringing that up, because like I said, it is a very serious situation and we're working hand-in-hand with the police department who is providing us with additional information every day.
So can we respectfully ask that when something comes up like that, we don't wait to two weeks if we don't know it? Please, sir, respectfully. Thank you so much.
And like I said, there's been communications going out, but, um...
To the full works, sir, to the full works.
Yes, check your emails. All right, so anything else? All right, hearing none, we stand adjourned.